All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for those who just presented. And I think next up is Director Young with Planning.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to get this started for us. Oops. Let me find my presentation real quick. All right. So I am Sarah Young, Director of the City County Planning Department. I have with me a few colleagues here this afternoon. Ryan Eaves, who is the Stormwater and Erosion Control Manager for Durham County, as well as Jody Morton, our City Fire Marshal. And they will be helping me co-present this afternoon. This presentation was one that was asked for, commissioned if you will, by the Board of County Commissioners. It is one that we are sharing with you all at your request. It's also been shared with the Joint City County Planning Committee. So that's a little bit of caveat is why you'll see some of the wording is obviously aimed at the original board, but we're sharing it. We've only changed to update the presentation to meet city standards. Otherwise, the content is identical, okay? All right. So we have heard a lot of concerns about the impacts of development, particularly in Southeast Durham. I'm sharing with you some photos that you all have, I'm sure, seen many times from different sites. Concerns from the community about impacts on water quality, about deforestation, grading in general, and the negative things that come with that. And so we've had a lot of conversations at this body when hearing cases, county commissioners at Joint City County, about how we can, in light of these concerns, as development happens, try and improve some of these conditions. And that was the impetus behind this. Durham County acknowledging, the Board of Commissioners acknowledging that they don't have a role in annexation cases, but they might be able to provide some assistance and help address some of these impacts anyway through joint efforts, through some of the programs that they run on the county side. So we're going to talk a little bit more about those. One thing that's, I think, important to take note of is we have had really an unprecedented level of development in Southeast Durham over the past number of years. You can see that the numbers here. And, you know, recently someone compared this to approximately two decades ago when South Point Mall was being built, and there was a lot of development there. There was a lot of development. It happened much more gradually over a longer period of time, was not as concentrated as what we've seen here in Southeast Durham. I haven't had a chance to run real numbers to compare, but anecdotally, just looking through the approvals, they were spread out over a much longer period of time. We still had some concerns back then from folks about impacts, but not to the extent that we're seeing them now. So I think that's representative of just the high pace, the unusually high pace of development that we're experiencing.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Again, I'm Ryan Eaves with the County Engineering and Environmental Services Department. I'm the Division Manager for Stormwater and Erosion Control. And my division issues land disturbance permits for the projects that we're talking about. This map that you're seeing now is really a graphical representation of kind of what Sarah's talking about. This is the Little Lake Creek watershed. The blue areas are all projects that are currently under land disturbance permits. They're well over 600 acres currently permitted, with a couple more recently permitted. There's a lot going on here because there's a lot going on in that part of the county. This has all the information, a lot of different information, including the wells in the area, the pump station that was fairly recently completed, the other sewer extensions in the area, just to show you a kind of graphical representation of all that's going on in this area of the county that we're talking about. So obviously, one of the big things that we've heard about is water quality. Fortunately, city stormwater, and I don't want to speak too much for them, but they have provided us some information for this report. They've been monitoring streams across the county, I'm sure you well know, since the early 2000s. They do have two monitoring stations in this watershed. And you can see here just some of the information from their studies of those monitoring stations. Of particular interest, turbidity is something that has been a concern that you're hearing about. One of the reasons we see that tomato soup, as some of the neighbors have talked about. You can see in Lake Creek, in 2020, they noticed moderate to high turbidity. Rocky Branch Creek was actually fairly low, but you'll just see here kind of what they've looked at. Additionally, they provided a memo about development and turbidity in particular. And they noticed that, or noted that the standard for turbidity is regularly exceeded in a number of Durham County streams, including Lake Creek. And that this level, the standard, was exceeded previous to recent development. One thing we talk a lot about are the soils in this part of the county and across a lot of the county. These triassic soils are very fine clay particles, and they will stay suspended for days at a time. And as well, another note in this memo is that in a study, including Lake Creek, of streams across the county, they noted elevated turbidity even during low flows, so outside of rain events, as a result of in-stream conditions found in the soils common to Durham.
So now we're going to talk about some potential strategies from various departments and agencies that might help. And I'm going to start off with some short-term planning strategies that we've already implemented. One, again, this was a request of the county commissioners. They know that they don't have a role in the annexation process, but wanted to find a way to know what cases were coming down the pike and potentially provide input. So what we did is we agreed to restore a prior practice from years ago where we give summaries of the new cases at the Joint City County Planning Committee. And that's actually emailed to both city council and county commissioners in their entirety, regardless of whether or not they serve on the JCCPC. That gives them a chance just to know what's in the hopper. And it also gives them the opportunity then, if they so choose, to provide the council their comments for your public hearings. And so that is the extent of their involvement. They just wanted to have an opportunity to be more informed, and if they so choose, participate in your public hearing process. The second thing that we've already implemented is, you know, staff works a lot with applicants. They come in for pre-submittals before they even submit a rezoning request or an annexation request. And we do a lot of coaching them through the process. We always make them aware of the concerns with development. And so you have seen proffers, you know, these are voluntary commitments on development plans that have been made by developers. There's some examples here, but we're seeing more and more of these on development plans, as you all well know. In terms of, this is labeled long-term, it's really more of a medium term because it's almost upon us now. We have been, staff's been working on a text amendment to address concerns about mass grading and tree preservation loss. And so we have presented a draft amendment to the JCCPC just on the 30th of November. It's going to be moving forward, hopefully, to Planning Commission. We're aiming for January. It's pretty aggressive, but we're trying. It is kind of a sophisticated amendment in that it's not just a straight looking at mass grading and limiting how much you can mass grade. It's requiring phasing of projects. It's tying those phases, giving the development community flexibility to size those phases in a way that makes sense with their project. But depending on the size of the phase, there's a differing level of sliding scale, if you will, of tree preservation or replacement tree coverage. So we are working on some examples as we move forward into a public engagement phase for that text amendment to illustrate how this will work for the community.
So in addition to the planning strategies, we have some strategies associated with the erosion control program and their requirements. In the short term, we've been working with the sites of concern out in the Lake Creek watershed to implement some additional measures on their site, including ground cover, the use of flocculants, outlet augmentations, stream crossing installations. Additionally, we've increased inspections. We have over 280 active permits across the site, and we're inspecting those with only three, three-and-a-half staff time. So the Board of Commissioners approved an additional erosion control technician to continue, or adding to our boots on the ground and inspections with the FY '23 budget. And he started in the middle of October. And so we've been able to add staff in that capacity. Just some examples really quick of the kinds of things we're talking about when we've been working with these sites. This is a site really at the top of the watershed. It's called Tread and Ham. You can see here in June, they had a relatively simple silt fence outlet with, which is pretty typical of what we see on sites across the county, where they have gravel in front of mesh netting along their silt fence. We worked with them to really beef that up. You can see we added multiple layers of gravel. More importantly, probably for retaining this sediment on site is getting ground cover established. We love to see that green on these active sites. So that's just one example of where we worked with these sites and where they were willing to take, you know, additional steps to increase the measures on site. Another example is a site across Doc Nichols Road, the Pelican property. You can see here, this was a stream crossing that was installed on that property. You can see that one of our staff was there throughout most of the process of installation. You can see the water here kind of coming through the pipe. It's turbid, but it's not quite that red color that we're seeing. And so because they were able to get better ground cover established, do this in a better manner, you know, we were able to reduce some of that turbidity on the site. Some long-term and similar to the ones Sarah talked about with planning, more medium-term and really upon us, things we're doing are looking to amend the erosion control ordinance in the UDO. Some of those proposed amendments include adding a double row of silt fence in sensitive areas. This is something we already recommend when we're doing our plan reviews, and don't really see a lot of pushback. Most developments are willing to go ahead and add that second row of silt fence, particularly along buffered areas. The triassic soils that I talked about earlier, these really fine clay particles, they're not as responsive to our current erosion control measures. So we are adding some additional triassic soil-specific requirements, including larger sediment basins and slower dewatering times, stricter ground cover requirements, and then flocculants. We also are looking at adding an additional enforcement measure and stop work orders. And we've discussed some ag site exemptions, but we're pausing on those a little bit. Just a quick note about the process for any of our amendments to the erosion control requirements in our ordinance. Because we receive our local program delegation from the Sedimentation Control Commission, we have to go through them before we can formally adopt anything on our end. We go to them before an informal review, which was done at their November 15 meeting. They've basically given their approval for what we're proposing to do. We come back, we adopt them locally, both the city and the county and the UDO, and then we go back to them for formal approval, and then we can kind of implement. That's just the process that we go through for those amendments in erosion control. Fortunately, we've started that process by going through the informal review process. Another area of concern and another area where the county thought we could, you know, assist in this capacity is through our Environmental Health Department. Some short-term options include well water sampling for the homeowners. We know there are approximately 400 wells in the Lake Creek watershed. However, there are some challenges to that. There's fairly limited staffing, which may mean we need to contract that out. Just the sampling alone costs almost $500 a sample. And so we, you know, this could cost a significant amount of money, as much as $150,000 or more, given inflation and all things. I will speak for them exactly on those numbers. But additionally, sampling is only for informational purposes. Environmental health has no enforcement capacity. And so really, what we'd be learning is what is in the water, but we wouldn't necessarily be able to do anything about it. We also have to consider the age and construction of the wells that are in this area. Some of them may be 40 or 50 years old. The construction standards have changed since they were installed. Long-term, we obviously can continue any of this monitoring. The state has a guideline that recommends monitoring well water every two years. Obviously, again, that's dependent on county funding.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Jody Morton, City Fire Marshal. We've worked on short-term strategies as well. Most importantly, responding to complaints. We were getting three to five complaints a week. We responded in a timely manner, nights, weekends. We've been able to rectify most issues just with communication. I think it's very important to say, though, about 95% of the complaints we've received have been non-founded. They've been in compliance with all local, federal, state laws. There's often disruptions. A lot of people working from home, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon, a blast goes off, and, you know, they didn't notice the signs outside, or they didn't hear the siren. So a lot of times, we get a call. We've even gotten calls to 911 that were unfounded as far as an emergency taking place. The blasting companies are required to be insured and bonded, which often makes this a civil matter. We serve often as the mediator and the enforcement agency. In the event that a resident or business alleges they have damages from the blasting, we provide the blasting insurer's information. The complaints have slowed down quite a bit in the last couple of months. As of this morning, we had seven blasting permits active in the city. And that's not seven in one particular area, that's throughout the city. We have, last week, we had 10 active blasting permits in the city. They typically blast about twice a day on these sites, anywhere from north Durham out to the hot-growth area of Southeast Durham, as we're all aware of. We've often, we've gone out and met with homeowners associations, we've met residents. We've recommended like group texts to where we can notify if a blast is going to take place at 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. One of the complaints we had recently, a blaster got sick, had to leave the site, they had to blast it a little bit later in the day. And that's the resident actually called 911 just because the blast was at, excuse me, blast was at 4:30 instead of at 3:00 p.m. So although these are disruptive to the quality of life, the majority of them have gone off without any problems whatsoever. We did amend our blasting permit process through our city attorney's office back in January of 2019. We have one in the district, this in the state. We consulted with City of Raleigh, Wake County, Greensboro, Charlotte. And we have language in our blasting permit process about well testing. There have been some concerns that have come to council and city management about wells not being tested. Those wells were tested this past week. And not all the wells that were mentioned here in the presentation, but if blasting took place within 500 feet of the well, those wells have been tested. So we do have some enforcement authority to do that. We have enforcement authority to revoke permits. I've been in this division 26 years. We've only had to revoke permits a couple of times in that 26 years. But basically, let's see if we can get to the next slide. Long-term, one of the things we can do, and we spoke with the city attorney's office this past week, we can even make local ordinance. We can make our blasting permit process more stringent than what it currently is. Some of it does require code council change through the building code council. The next meeting, and you'll see it on the slides here, was this month. I think those are held quarterly. And we can regulate the blasting companies more so. One of the things we did in this particular case, we found a blasting company, they're blasting 650 feet without blasting mats, which keeps the rock from going airborne, you know, to prevent property damage or, you know, it's a life safety issue. In those particular instances, we put additional restrictions on the blasting company. We require an inspector to be there twice a day. We limit the number of times they can blast to twice a day. And one of the things we talked about long-term is possibly having an additional fee put on the blasting company if they drain city resources to where we have to be there more often. Any questions on the fire department's response?
All right. And so just to wrap it up, we have, in terms of next steps, and there's a variety of things that we've talked about are already underway. We're trying to coach applicants to put forth their best effort to address these issues proactively. We've connected the county commissioners to you all's public hearing process. We've got a couple of text amendments underway. And the city is going to continue, I believe, to monitor Lake Creek next year, which would have been an off-year, but they're going to keep it on the list and continue to monitor it next year as well. In terms of other things that are potentials, we talked about the well water sampling, additional, continuing to help educate and connect homeowners with the proper information about blasting permits and recourses there. And so with that, if there are any questions, we're all happy to answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you for this information, and thank you for being responsive to community members as well as us trying to answer these questions. As we know, development takes quite a bit of time in this city, in this county. And time is money, but also quality of life matters. So with these additional steps that are in place, that I believe, you know, do a great job at addressing the quality of life side of it, what type of impact do you believe it's going to have on the process to, from application to actual structure when it comes to development?
Are you referring to the changes, particularly in terms of ordinance changes that might be coming?
Yes.
So we, those will definitely have an impact on how folks design their sites. We are proactively doing engagement with some of our frequent development community members, designers that do a lot of work. They're the names that you see constantly and do the bulk of the applications through our department to make sure they know what's being proposed, make sure they have a chance to provide input and give us real examples. I did some early research with a few of those firms just to make sure that, you know, I had a good understanding of the toll that some of these things would take in terms of development. It will require that sites that have not yet gone through the site plan process are designed to meet the new standards whenever they take effect. It will probably, my expectation is that we will probably start to see some more compact, denser development in order to preserve some of this area and limit grading. So I think probably the nature, the character of the development that we're going to see, hopefully, will change some. In terms of timeline, I don't necessarily think it should impact the timeline for approvals. Designing to the ordinance is designing to the ordinance, and that's why we're trying to get ahead of this and make sure the development community knows what's coming, has a chance for input, just like any other member of the community, and is well aware before the regulations take effect.
Okay, great. Thank you. And when you say compact, are you meaning like the size of the parcel that may be inserted into the application or something else?
I mean in terms of the actual land disturbance that may happen on a site.
Okay, okay. I wonder if that's going to, actually, parcel size, or when people apply for specific parcels of land to develop, that may be a separate question for a separate meeting space. So I'm going to email you offline about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor O'Neil?
Just wanted to say thank you for breaking a lot of this information down. Really appreciate you on your staff. Thank you all.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. And I want to thank you as well. I specifically want to thank the county commissioners and the chair specifically for bringing this issue forward and actually highlighting the matter, because I think it's been coming up in our council meetings for the last few months pretty aggressively. I also just want to say that there's, I had a question regarding the unfounded claims, I think that Fire Marshal Moore mentioned.
Sure. The unfounded...
I just wanted to figure out, so are you saying there was no case where blasting occurred without a permit?
That's correct.
How do you track that?
Within the last year, that's correct.
How do you track that?
How do we track it? Through our fire inspection reporting software, which is streamlined.
Fire inspection...
Reporting software is streamlined, where we keep up with all of our records.
Okay. And how would a resident find that type of information?
How can they get that information? Just through the next request system. And we get quite a few of those.
Okay. Thank you. And then I noted, you mentioned the building code council changes. Is there any language that you forwarded? Because I think that those are items that should be on our legislative agenda, as well as the county's legislative agenda, and as well as the North Carolina League of Municipalities' legislative agenda, so that they understand that these are all, they're connected across the state, not just limited to Durham. So it would be helpful to have that language.
Sure. Yeah, right now, we're utilizing the 2018 NC Fire Code, which is a small section, and NFPA 495. Those are the two governing code authorities on it. We're happy to provide any additional information.
Thank you. And I think those were mostly my questions. I just wanted to comment and say to staff that I really appreciate the speed, all of you, and your teams, the speed that you've been moving on this, and just appreciate figuring out a solution rather than just saying it's just what it is. And I think that's helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions from Councilmember Johnson, who had to leave early, so I'm going to ask the questions that she would have asked if she'd been here. One, she wanted to know how splitting up the mass grading helps when the same amount of land is graded at the end, the total?
So the way that that helps is limiting how much can be graded at any one time limits how much sediment is going to potentially flow into a water body, right? So even though you may have 100 acres over time in an area that gets graded, if it's being graded a little bit at a time, and those phases are not allowed to overlap, which they are not going to be in the proposal, that should limit the turbidity of the water at any given point. And that is kind of the depth of my knowledge when I cross over into water talk, so I'll defer to Ryan or one of my other colleagues.
So basically, the best preventative measure for sediment reaching our streams is ground cover, whether that's temporary during development, or it's the permanent ground cover, even, you know, asphalt, you know, parking lots, sidewalks, lawns, et cetera. So the more we can have a site, you know, grade, then stabilize, then move to the next grade, stabilize, move to the next, kind of, you know, in Sarah's example of, you know, 100 acres, if it's 20 acres at a time over, you know, a longer period, the better we can manage the sediment that leaves the site.
Thank you. And then the second question was around the use of flocculants, and then how is it determined that they're safe for the water?
So the Department of Environmental Quality has a list of flocculants that are allowed for usage in this manner. And so one of the requirements in the proposed ordinance amendments is that you use a flocculent from that list.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate that. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you. We got this last week at JCCPC, so I asked all my questions there. I see Councilmember Williams' hand is up.
Yeah, about the mass grading, I appreciate Councilmember's question on that. So I've been told that mass grading or incremental grading impacts the cost of it. And why, and it goes back to the quality of life versus this affordability issue. I don't want us to be in a position to where we're held by a developer. You know, we have a few good ones around here, but we also have some that are ill-will. And are we putting ourselves in a situation to where that, quote, "mass grading," if we don't do it, then it's going to be more expensive? And I'm thinking about the other end of this, where housing is going to go up because of the cost of the development. And while I agree that we need to incrementally, you know, do the mass grading for environmental concerns, I do want to know how that financially may impact, or is that just a scapegoat that someone may be identifying?
So that's an excellent question. So first of all, mass grading is defined in the ordinance as grading of four or more acres. Once you pass that threshold, it's considered mass grading. So mass grading is a huge spectrum. I think what we're proposing in the ordinance is to limit grading to reasonable phases, right? I did do a little bit of research with some of our design community members as to what those impacts might be if they were to, and we're not talking lot by lot, site grading, like you've had some folks come and propose to you all. That would absolutely be cost prohibitive. However, grading in phases means you're going to have to deploy land moving equipment multiple times during a project as opposed to once at the beginning. You're going to have to lay out infrastructure, you know, several times as opposed to all at once at the beginning. And those multiple deployments do add cost. It can be, you know, per lot somewhere in the 15,000 to 20,000 dollar range. That sounds like a lot. I will say that every, every requirement in our ordinance adds cost to a development. Every hurdle, every standard that we put in place to try and provide some good community outcome adds cost to a development, right? And so I think the, the thing to take into account is, you know, the housing prices that we're seeing today, a lot of, you know, I drive through these areas, you know, starting from the 400s and now I'm starting to see townhouses from the 400s, which is unbelievable to me. When you're adding, you know, 15,000, 20,000 dollars to that, I think we can all say that 400,000 wasn't really affordable to begin with. I also know that the, from the fill-in-the-blank price, you know, that folks market for their projects, consumers, they will put on that whatever they want in terms of their comfort level for interior finishes. It's not unusual for a prospective homeowner to spend between another 50 to 100,000 dollars on top of that in options, you know, choosing a nicer lot with a better view, upgrading carpet, et cetera, you know, whatever. So it will impact the cost of housing some, yes.
Thank you. And that's what I wanted to just have stated out loud. I, you know, I'm not dampening on anyone's, you know, ability to make money, but I do want it, I did want it to be stated publicly that, you know, the more things that we impose for the sake of, you know, environmental or quality of life, which is some decisions that we have to make sometimes, on the backend, you know, we have to check ourselves when we start talking about affordable housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. And I appreciate Councilmember Williams' question. And it's important that we acknowledge that the cost will be there and that it can increase for housing, but I do think it's also very real that there's this, there's a cost long-term when you don't have water and so it's important. I did want to track back to the phases again. I wasn't going to leave it alone, but since we're in this space, I do want to just say that I think it would be helpful if the, if the phases were decreased from 50 to 35 in one specific reason and is just acknowledging that those are usually the most sensitive areas that we're even having that conversation around the phasing as we're moving forward. So even if it was limited to the areas that were sensitive or limited to projects where they had multiple sensitive areas like this, like I'm trying to think of a recent case where you've got like four or five stream like arms going through a project, it might be helpful that way so that, so that you're not, because 50 acres is still a lot, especially when there are stream crossings that are being developed over. But I do want you to address that and make sure that it's stated.
Sure. And I know some of your colleagues may not have seen the amendment and the proposal, so I'm going to explain a little bit just for the sake of providing a complete answer. The kind of sophisticated system that correlates tree preservation with how much you grade, what we're saying is you cannot have a phase that's greater than 50 acres. So that's like a maximum cap. Then we have a tiered system of if you grade, you know, up to 20 acres, you have to provide this amount of tree preservation. I'm going to say it's 20%. I don't remember, but I think it's something like that, right? And then it moves up from the 20 acres, there's like another threshold like 20 to 30, 30 to 40, 40 to 50. If you are at the maximum, you're grading the 50 acres, you're going to have the highest level of tree preservation. It's something like, I think, 40%. It doubles the amount of tree preservation that you are now required to keep. When you subtract that 40% out, you're really only going to be left with, you know, 30 acres or so out of that 50. That still doesn't take into account, and this is where staff is going to do a more holistic example as we move into the, the public phase, is that doesn't take into account the fact that you still have to have buffers. You still may have streams and other things that require buffers that are going to eat up more of that. So out of that 50 acres, you realistically may be down into the 20s. I am concerned that if we ratchet that down too far, it will really make it cost prohibitive and difficult for developers to develop. I also think that, you know, we've said it for years, all the easy land is gone, right, to develop, right? All we have left in terms of large tracts, as you can see in Southeast Durham, there's a lot of streams, a lot of environmental features. And so giving folks that flexibility so that they can, as they have, you know, a piece of land that maybe is bifurcated by several, you know, water features, that they can say, oh, you know, this, this little V here, that's 44 acres, it makes sense to do that one. This one by itself is really only 13 acres, I need to do that one by itself because I can mobilize and make sense, you know, of my project. So I just offer that as a bit of what staff has been thinking about behind the scenes.
Thank you. And I think that's helpful because it helps to, like to unpack the reason why the phasing is important because there is a benefit in making sure that that ground cover is in place to prevent all of the triassic soils, which I noticed that map was not on there, which is most of Durham County, from being all moved at the same time. And so I really want to say that this has been one of, it's oddly one of the best policy wins that I've seen since I've been on council and I am really excited that this is moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much. I'll pass it back to you, Mayor O'Neil.
Thank you all. Thank you all for, of course, your help to my colleagues and making sure that we have an efficiently running process. I think we're going to continue this unless I see nods otherwise in terms of the sharing of responsibilities. All right. So we're now at...